This is our April City Council meeting, it's April fifteenth, so with that we'll call to order. If you are thinking about speaking for the public forum, please fill out a form that's on the podium, your name, address, and then bring that up to me, please. With that, we'll do the call order.
All right, Mayor Eichorst.
Here.
Councilor Penegras.
Here.
Councilor Phillips.
Here.
Councilor Spring.
Here.
Councilor Reisacher.
Here.
And then we have President Joe Palin, city administrator, our new city clerk, Kaden Dolan's here, and Mike Flaherty is online.
The next item is our agenda, and I would like to add two items under the, there's three items, two items under the employee rec- Employee Relations Committee on page four or six, it's item J, I, just a couple of things, our ERC committee would like to talk about a, one item is Administrative Day coming up soon, talk about that, and the other item is a staff review completion date of June thirteenth for all of our city staffs, for our annual reviews, we'd like to have that completed and documented in our minutes. And the other item is under Streets and Roads, item JB, Streets and Roads, is to schedule a street review with our street committee sometime in late April, early May, so we can have something for the May council meeting.
Yeah, I would like to add under New Business, number C, like to discuss Herb's situation with this water valve, water job.
That's under B.
C, C on this business.
I also have an edit under Parks and Trails, Action Two, on the fiscal agent for the park audit, just to reflect that we want to accept that $2,700 grant from Homestead County, and then use the park committee to work on paying those invoices as they come through.
So that was under I?
Under Parks and Trails, I, Action Two.
That's at which one?
Under Parks and Trails, Action Two, to edit the motion on allowing us to accept the $2,700 or Homestead grant for Parks and Trails audits, and then use the park committee to pay those invoices.
Action Two. Motion to recommend
I want to approve that grant.
If we get those amendments.
What was the Streets and Roads ones again, real quick?
The first one is ERC.
No, just the Streets and Roads ones.
Oh, um, April, May, Street Review Committee.
Yep, what was the, what did you want?
Oh, to do a street review, we have, a committee goes out in early, late May, or late April, early May, come back for the May council meeting with a proposal, a report.
Okay, Joe.
Okay, so we have two items under ERC, Administrative Day, and Staff Reviews, date by June thirteenth, under Street and Roads, a May Street Review, prepare for the May council meetings, under New Business, Item C, Herb's Water Connection. And the last one is under Parks and Trails, under the second, I, a motion to recommend approval of the $2,700 from Homestead or H. Bradley, for the audit, park audit. Why make a motion, we approve those admissions or amendments to the council agenda?
Second.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, seeing if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Close? Okay, next item is our public forum. The three time limit per person, the city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be part of city business and must adhere to data privacy rules, and no employee names may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. To address the city council during public forum, get us the podium, state your name and address, and fill out the white cards invited, and speakers will be only recognized once. It will be timed, again speaking when the green card is raised by Jason. Yellow card indicates you have thirty seconds left, red card indicates you have reached your three minute time limit and must stop. So with that, I hope, public forum will open up at six thirty-seven PM. So we have three here, I think the first one was from Joyce Hertzinger.
Hi, Joyce Hertzinger, six hundred and sixth Street, Southwest in Orinoco. First time I've been speaking on behalf of Kevin McDermott, he wanted to be here tonight, but he is sick, so he asked me to speak. Kevin's a former mayor, committee member for parks, and has been helpful in the city for quite a bit. He wanted to speak in support of foregoing the $30 charge for the room charge for the seniors' meetings or daytime meetings. He is saying that there is a precedent set in the past years of not having a charge for those meetings. The seniors have made donations to improvements to the community center over the years. And also, if you notice, there is a name on the door for seniors. So those are his comments. The other thing I would like to speak to tonight is just kind of update you on what age-friendly Orinoco area has been up to over the last year. We had our Resource Fair in April of 2024. Last fall, we became a 501(c)(3) organization, and we have a nonprofit status as well. We are working with the past seniors group to restart meetings, to help the community have activities for them and socialization. We're also working with the Orinoco Park Committee on their request to be part of helping the park audit grant that was received from Age Friendly, Homestead County. And just last night, with the help from the Orinoco Fire Relief Association, we received a grant, and now we'll be printing brochures, we're hoping to get at least 250 brochures printed, and we will be distributing them to the fire department, the first responders, to pass out when they go on a call that they call the fall call, case an adult has fallen. And also, if they're in a situation where they see a vulnerable adult. We're also looking to place brochures around the community, the community center here, our post office, and other areas as well. Thank you.
Okay, so I came to the water sewer meeting this week and explained to them what I think that's happened in my driveway. So all I'm asking is some responsibility from the city, because I think the curb stop was left too high, so I couldn't drive on it, and if I did, it would put pressure down on the connections and the growth. So I just think that the city should help pay for some of this. You know, and I, I did the diagnosing myself pretty much by letting the water on because we thought it might be problems, but it wasn't. So now I'm stuck with a $175 water bill. Normally, it's fifty-some dollars. But I, I just think that the city should pay for some of this. It's about the $35,000 bill. But I already paid Otman Excavating most of his, and he's helping, and I appreciate being helped and because I, I, I think he should have anyway, because it's the city's curb stop. Now, and, and according to what I've read, the city is responsible for maintaining the curb stop. And it was just left too high, I'm supposed to be able to drive on it. But now Kane, he cut it down, so the, the box that goes on top is is good, it won't be hitting the top of the riser anymore. So I, I really believe that's what caused it to happen, because it, I don't think it's going to break by itself, sitting underground without nothing moving it, something moved it. So, uh, I guess if I thought I wasn't right, I wouldn't be making anything up about this, this is, and I don't think I'm setting precedence by the city helping with this, because it was the city's curb stop that's, that caused it. So really, I think that's the city's responsibility. But like I say, I'm willing to pay for, pay for it, and I would just like the city to look into that and thank you.
If you'd also like to speak for public forum? Nature, have you filled out a card? Yeah, please do, go ahead.
You want me to start talking now and fill it out afterwards, or?
You can do that afterwards, you can go.
Okay. So I'm Josh Kushan, I live at fourteen forty Cedar Point Road Southeast, and I'm not here to speak about anything that's happening tonight from what I could see on the agenda, but I did email out to the city administrator today and received a very prompt reply that I was impressed by regarding the situation with the upcoming development of condos with, within the plots of land that include the bus depot. And first, we're excited, as a family, we're excited to see this being developed as residential too, seeing that we've had a lot of discussions in the, in the past couple of years about what, what things are zoned for, and we fully support rezoning the, the commercial sliver of land over to R2 to have that development come in. Just wanted to show up tonight and be on record saying that we were disappointed when reviewing the proposed plan that they currently have to see that one of the exits, one of their seven exits that they have for this community that they plan to build is directly across from our driveway that exits onto Cedar Point Drive Southeast. So we just have some safety concerns with that, and, and in general, we were thinking that it seemed like an awful lot of entrances and exits, and there was some concern with it being pretty close to the stop sign that's at Norman Street as well. So we realize it's just a proposal at this point, there's still a lot of moving parts that go into it, but just not knowing if I'd be able to attend any future city council meetings, I wanted to go on record and, and say that we're, we have concerns about it, and we would ask the developer, consider an alternate entrance or exit at those, those southeast locations. Thanks.
You filled out a card, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Second call for public forum. Third, final call for public forum. Anybody on the there anybody on the line that would like to speak to public forum? Seeing none, I'm closing the public forum at six forty-seven.
Where is it on the agenda? We added it under New Business, C.
There's this item C, is there?
I've got A and B. That was an addition.
So that was on the agenda?
It was an addition to.
Paul added it.
Copy does not have C on it.
Well, no, we just added it.
We added it, well, on the other.
Public forum is closed, so continue on. Six forty-nine. First item is petition that we're grueling, regarding the request for hospital appreciation event. Make a motion to accept the petition. We'll second that. Oh, I guess the comments are typically, we close at eight eleven?
It's an hour. Uh, midnight is the request, and that's typical, that's what she did last year. So they, pretty much is everything, the same as last year, was what they did, so.
She had to pay a gathering permit?
This is the gathering permit, already been paid.
Okay, that's paid.
Yep. Basically, all we're doing here is just to prove. Just to prove, yeah. Yeah, the extension of the, the timeframe for there, for the noise ordinances and things like that, and kind of give them that approval to do it, so.
Make a motion, we approve the petition to.
Already did, with the motion and the second, yep.
I'm sorry. Any other comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, seeing if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Next item is a request by the EDA committee, would like to move forward with their city branding initiative, Jamie would like. Comments you'd like to add?
Yeah, I can add a couple of comments, if the group was good. Don't be a start. Need to open up for the discussion before anything.
Public motion, we approve the EDA request. Second.
Great, all right, thank you, everybody, thank you for having me. I'm gonna just have a couple of prepared comments, and then I'm prepared also to answer any questions that you might have as well. So good evening, I'm Jamie Rofte, I live here in Orinoco, nine nine zero Cedar Point Lane. I'm also a member of the EDA as well, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Orinoco EDA to share on this exciting opportunity that we see for our future of our city, and respectfully request your partnership in this next step. Specifically, in your packet, you'll see that we're asking the city council to consider co-investing with the EDA in the development of a new city logo and identity in collaboration with a marketing firm known as Tulip Tree. Just a brief background and some context to this ask, through the EDA's recent community engagement, which we know many of you were a part of, we're gonna make a call, we sent out a city survey, we also did in-person sessions. We gathered valuable insights from our community members and our residents on what their aspirations are for Orinoco. In these findings, we highlighted a collective desire to preserve our town's unique character while embracing thoughtful growth and modernization. And that's really where we started to have some conversations about the growth of our community and the look and feel of our brand, and what that could do for our future. As you know, the city logo serves as a visual embodiment of these shared goals. It can honor our history, at the same time, help us think about the future. The EDA has secured a $10,000 grant to help with this work, and that was the work from Rebecca, who we hired with Suda, to help lead the EDA, and allow us to bring us professional experience without placing the full financial responsibility on the city. And what we're asking to the day is that the city considers a financial contribution to this support and helps shape the updated community center identity for Orinoco. We feel that with the recent sewer completion, with the potential growth of our future, right now is a great time for us to be thinking about a new look and feel. It will help us to serve in attracting new residents, new visitors, and new businesses. We also feel that it's more than just an image, it's helping us to create a sense of pride and belonging and unity, all things that came up in our survey as well. We also want to recognize that we have a deep value for our heritage of this community, and we understand that some residents feel a strong connection to the existing logo and what it represents, particularly Gold Rush Days. We want to be super clear that this process will not erase our past, and instead, it will help support it and build upon it. Gold Rush Days remains an important part of Orinoco's history and our story, but it's not the only story that we have to tell. Orinoco is growing, we're a river town, a family town, a welcoming town, and we feel it's a great time for us to work together to find a look and feel that represents that all. We feel like partnering with Tulip Tree means that the, that this will be an engagement first process, so you see that in the packet, that the organization is suggesting that we do some community engagement along the way. We see a group of people coming together, representatives from the EDA, from city council, businesses, and community members to be a part of this process and helping to bring forward a new look and feel. So in closing, I just ask if the city council supports the investment of Orinoco's future, and we look forward to working with you on this endeavor.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions, your comments?
Regarding the request, I will say, I'll talk a little bit about my part, I also included a letter in there to mayor and council here. The big struggle they were having with for a while there was finding the funding for this. They have the grant for 10,000, which is awesome, they went out and were able to get that. But, you know, after reviewing the three different companies they had, and picking the one that felt best suited their needs, they're, they're still short on funding. They do want to move forward with this, and, you know, at the end of the day, I think that they'll entertain options, no matter what, to try to move forward with it. However, having the appropriate funding to, to do it right the first time and get everything done that we need to is important. With that, I went back and looked at some of my budgets, and where I might be able to cut some of my funding, and transfer it over to a budget amendment to the EDA, and looking at our two positions under my budget sections for the deputy clerk, or now clerk, and our administrative assistant, we will have unused funds coming from there for the year, for the three months that we didn't have people in those positions. And this is strictly from the salaries budget line item, it doesn't include any of the other ones for, that we budgeted for para and retirement and all these other ones. This is strictly from the salary line, where we budget our annual pay over time, and any other expenses there. So looking at that, you'll see in the memo with our deputy clerk, you know, we, I think, realistically, looking at the numbers, we probably had closer to $21,000 of unused funds in salaries alone. And then with the administrative assistant, we had a little over $8,000 of unused funds. So I took that and I said, okay, you know, they're, they asked me for ten, but I did this to show that, you know, we could put 20,000, amend the budget for up to 20,000 to help cover their costs. And it would still allow us room in our budget to make sure that we're funding the two employees that we now have in those positions. So you'll see that, you know, I support this from the administrative side, I think this is a very important initiative for the, not just for us, but for the city as a whole. Like Jamie talked about, there's a lot happening, a lot growing, a lot changing, we're not trying to change our background or our history, especially when it comes to Gold Rush, that's always going to be a stable part of this community. But it's time to, to do this branding initiative and get everything together. And this will be an initiative that will last us ten, twenty years before we need to redo this. So it's a, it's a solid investment in the community itself. So with that, you know, part of this is saying, okay, you know, they're gonna, if the approval comes to do this, they will start moving forward with their 10,000, and then next month, I would bring forward a budget amendment resolution to have presented council for the remainder of the $10,000, that's probably what it'll end up being. So, but I just wanted to explain to council that this is how we're going to get there, and that it can be done. Budget amendments are common practice in cities, they happen as moving things around, we're not going up or down with our budget, we're just moving it from one line item to a different line item to help support the city as it moves forward, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I see what, what, and, and again, I believe that Orinoco and one of the only communities that's been in this area with the Gold Rush, that there is an head of Gold Rush, which makes Orinoco very unique in itself. And, and I, I understand wanting to, to do this, I, I just think that the way we have the budget right now, what's going on, and we're looking at April, we don't know what the rest of the year has to show for itself, that we might need the other funds. Might be something else, like a flood that comes, like we had last year, did it. I would just suggest that we turn around and put this for next year, for our budgeting for next year, which is only going to be a few months off before we do the budget off this stuff, because I don't think making a difference on that this year is going to make a difference. But I think that it's a good direction, but I'd like to have it for next year's budget that we work on for EDA.
Senior, what is the current motion?
There is no motion, there is no motion, there shouldn't be any discussion.
How long would the branding take, like what's the turnaround time?
It's in the proposal.
Yeah, she has that. She has.
Fourteen weeks.
The proposal was on page seventeen.
Oh, sixteen to thirty weeks.
And page eighteen had some of the different fees that went along with it, so.
So you're talking seven months.
That was kind of around that sixty-month timeframe, I think, which, which is pretty common for most of the companies, the, the three companies that were looked at and reviewed. So, you know.
Engagement and all, all of that as well, so that adds time.
Well, the concern with, I will, I will say the concern, I think they, they spoke about as well, with pushing it back, because there was a thought of budgeting it for next year is okay, well, we're still pushing it back another six to eight months into next year as well, so now it's not just a year, it's a year and a half, two years it's being pushed back, so. This is a project they're passionate about and they want to move forward with. And I think it's good that our, you know, committees are passionate about their projects and doing the work and putting in the work that they need to form.
I am curious what branding does for the city.
Well, I think I support what we're proposing here, I do think that it was in our goals for the EDA, or EDA, EDA together for 2025, so I I support it because I think it's the recognition that we've separated Gold Rush from city activities, it's still a very big part of our city and will continue to be part of our city. But I think as a city, we're to a point with our growth, potential growth with the sewer plant and future additions that we're talking about, I do think we do need to re-identify ourselves and I think this is a great approach to doing that and.
Paul, if I may, Paul, I'll answer your question real quick. Some of the key points that branding will do for the city. They can improve public perception, attract new residents and businesses, enhance community pride, support economic development and tourism, unify the community and identity, reflect change or growth and help stimulate engagement and visioning, those are some of the key bullet points of what branding will do for a city, which as we come into a city that's growing, I think that's very important to have all that done.
I think that we have the growth right now that's coming into the city without the rebranding at this point this year for what's going on, so that's why I'm saying I don't think it's gonna make a difference at all this year. But I'd like to have it for the budget for next year where we can budget it that way. Just like, you know, again, every, I think most every community that there is around has a sewer plant, I mean, you know, to brag, we got a sewer plant, that is not really a way to brag about it, but the growth is coming organically of what's happening right now. Which we're talking about a new development that's coming in right now with what's gonna be presented this evening. You know, so the growth is there, you know, Gold Rush Crossing, whatever might happen there is bringing in that part of it. I think people are actually trying to beat a path to Orinoco right now without doing the rebranding. And again, I say that there's nothing wrong with that, I agree with doing it, but I'd like to do it next year instead of this year.
I think it's probably pretty important to get the ball rolling on this and part of it is for that reason that we are expecting this growth, if we get new businesses coming in and they want to use a logo that we have, right now, we don't really have one, we have the bridges, it's kind of grainy. I think that it's been great ever since Facebook just switched over, our city, Facebook just switched over to that old bridge logo and now it's very easy to differentiate between what the citizens' page is and what is actually coming from the city. I think that has been really important and that's just a small reason why a logo could help the city, getting the ball rolling, but we don't want to have these businesses coming in and using old logos and then they're gonna have to update things. Another point that I would like to say is that once we have these logos and this brand, this is ours, we own it and we can actually profit off of that as well to recuperate some of the cost, so we can put the logo on mugs or t-shirts or, and it's not a lot and I wouldn't cover the whole cost, but it can cover some of it, so. I think getting the ball rolling just for uniformity. We've got the people that are passionate about this right now. And I think it's important to keep going with it and keep the uniformity.
So, again, I understand what you're going with, I just want to do it for next year's budget. Again, new businesses, I don't see a whole lot of businesses that are gonna be coming in in the next six months. You know, maybe one restaurant that there is, but the rest of it, there's no buildings to be able to have the businesses coming in. So, again, I'm saying I agree with what you're doing, I just want to do it for next year's budget.
With the grant, is there pieces of it that we could capitalize on it, so if we said we really are focused on a logo, I know that they they have their whole spiel of doing all of the pieces, but could we say we just want graphic design and we want a logo and here's our budget? We only have 10,000, like could we could we do something with that if we're not gonna get the whole package?
Sure, so our members of the EDA met with Tulip Tree a couple of weeks ago just to talk about the flexibility and what their team had shared, and Jason, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, said, you know, there is some flexibility in the proposal. But each of them build on the next one, so that's why there is the engagement and it does have dollars attached to it because we want to make sure that we're using that process to inform it, that it's not just someone choosing something. And we also feel that that will help. And some of the other community engagement that we've done is to continue to build, you know, unity and community and we feel like that's an important piece. I think a part of this grant, and Jason, you remind me, that there has to be some matching to it, do you remember? I'd have to look into the.
I don't think there's any matching.
Okay, sounds good. So, we felt like, she said she can, their teams that they can work with us, we could put in language up to a certain amount, but each of those pieces were a really important group.
And I think the big thing too was that what's talking with them, even still you're looking at 15,000, you know, because like I said, you still gotta get those base ones done to build up to the rest of it, so the project's still gonna end up being over the $10,000. So, there's still that need for extra funding.
I just think if the budget's 10,000, like what could we do with that money? And maybe it's not the whole kit and caboodle, but it's something to continue us to move forward and then again, next year, maybe it is a more in-depth kind of engagement for some of those pieces, I'm just wondering, like, how do we capitalize on what we can do and what we have control over with the money we have?
The other concern, I think, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, the grant is only for this year, do you remember?
Do you believe it's only for this year?
Yeah, so that's the other issue, we definitely apply for a grant, we don't, if we turn this down and don't, then we're kind of.
What if we did, like, the community engagement part of it that there is on looking at this and have some design ideas to be working with the community with that and to let them know we want to move ahead, but we want to do it for next year's budget. But to turn around and maybe move some of these community parts, ideas that there might be to take a look, so we'll keep the project moving. You know, but yet still have that money for next year, that's why I just.
It's a good question, I think drawing out the process long, we might run into some issues on kind of building momentum towards a finished product. I mean, I think at the EDA level, we did talk about if there wasn't capacity to do a matching 10, if the council would consider like a matching five. And the owners of Tulip Tree said they would try to work the best they could within this to get the best product out. That would be a potential as well, we could work with them to say, this is what we have and how would we manage it? What we wanted to try to stay away from is that I'm not a marketing specialist, I'm not a branding specialist, I've done it before with people, but we don't want to start pulling pieces out, we want them to say, okay, this is our budget and what can you deliver? And she was suggesting sort of a range of, I think 15 to 22 is what I wrote down, Jason, from our conversation. Is that, you know, best will get you 22, good will get you 15, and you know, in the middle, but that's kind of the ranges of what some of the other communities have worked with and where they've found success.
So, the branding was one of our, when we set up our economic development authority, one of our, branding was one of our goals for 2015 and we think it's the right timing, the timing is four to seven months by the time the project's over, so. The idea is that we're in a position going into next year and I do think that we are building excitement, we have two housing developments that we're looking at to bring people to, so it is an opportune time and there's some commercial businesses that we're looking at as well that are interested in town, so I think it is a good time for us to spend our loan that we have for the 10,000 and complement it with the other five to 10,000 that we're talking about here for the total, so I do think it's, yes, we can wait, there's no question. But let's build on the enthusiasm we have and show and demonstrate to the community that we are looking forward. And I do think it's, you know, whether it's, the idea was that we just, that was one of our goals from the EDA. The council has given us the responsibility to come back with these designs and programs and I think it's important that we seriously consider doing them, so. We're through the process of identifying the companies and we think this is the best company that can offer what we want to do and be able to work with them.
I mean, and I understand what you're saying with that, Ryland. If we turned around and on moving this forward with what we have with the grant now for the 10,000 and if they could come up with, you know, four or five preliminary logo ideas and with what we have coming up now with Gold Rush coming up this summer, we're looking at doing a Fourth of July engagement that there is with that as well. And also during the summer, we have National Night Out or whatever we're calling it right now. Would be able to have some great community involvements that there were to be able to get the input from that of what's going on and show the community that we're moving ahead with what goes on. But for the majority of the rest of it, I'd still like to have it in next year's budget to be able to do that, maybe we can step it, but move the project along, so it's not like going, we don't want to do anything from now until next year. But this would be ideal times, especially with the community involvement, which would be great during the summertime to be able to have something like that to show the people that this is the direction we're going and the community to know the involvement that we have with that to move ahead.
My concern is that company, any company really to try to work with, they're not gonna want to drag this out over a year and a half. You know, when they do these, they say, okay, here's our time, they know that we're going to invest this amount of time in this organization and then move on to our next one and next one type thing. So, to come at them and say, oh, well, we want to drag this out for a year and a half, I don't know what they're gonna say to that and I don't know that we're gonna have many of them to say, oh yeah, we want to to do that, so again, I draw on the excitement of our citizens involved in the EDA.
I would also assume that the price will go up if we're asking for more of their time. Their proposal is saying that this work can be completed between four and eight months. They're suggesting that this one compared to other cities would be about six. That's currently in their proposal, if we go back and ask, it's up to that firm to come back to us and say we want to pull it out longer because of budgets, if that is the desire of the council, I would imagine that the cost will go up because we're asking for more of their time.
But if we budget it next year, that wouldn't be a big deal of what's really going on, because we can put in our budget to be able to take care of that. And I wasn't looking at a year and a half on that, Jason, I think you're exaggerating the year and a half. You know, between now and January, because once we approve the budget that there is behind it, they can do the kickoff right away in January, which isn't a year and a half down the road. But if they started now and they did the work that there is on coming up as we piece it together, I think that will keep the movement going and keep the engagement going. And with what's going on in the summer, I think it'd be ideal for the community to see some of the things that they might be doing that way.
I think it just really depends on how far $10,000 gets us.
Well, let's find out what it is.
But it's in here.
But I'm saying like time-wise, you know, what does that equate to, $10,000 worth of their time is, okay, we're gonna get us this far, but then you know, maybe $10,000 is eaten up in the first two months, well now we're still waiting for six months worth of work on the backend, or four to six months on the backend. That's where I'm getting the year and a half up to. But we have the funding to be able to do it, so that's why I think it's important to just do it, do the project as a whole and move forward with it. So.
I know, it's always easy to move things and spend things and see things that are there and want to do it, I'm looking also, like I said, we don't know what the rest of this year has to bring and what might happen this year. You know, and to be on the smart side that there is behind it. You know, again, I'm not against the project at all, I'm just, I want to do it where we can put it in the budget and have it budgeted for next year and use the 10,000 now and get started.
And if you get started and start to spend that, again, we could always revisit it in like September and if those funds are still available, Jason, then we give them, write them another check to continue that.
I would go along with that idea, I think that makes sense too, to make sure, so.
I think the billing that's outlined in here is there's a $3,000 deposit due at the beginning of the project with subsequent service hours beyond the initial 3,000 billed at the end of each month, so they'd be billing this hourly, month to month. So, once we started getting close to that 10,000, we would probably have to pause it so they wouldn't go over that 10,000 in the middle of a month.
But I think that would make it an idea, what you're talking about, Marie, to take a look at it that way too. I'm just, again, going in and changing everything in the budget just because, you know, it's there right now. We don't know what the rest of the year has to bring.
We do have a. I'll hold, if I may, I have the feeling if I use 23 months worth of my employee's salary, we're gonna have to lose employees because that's three months of extra time that they're gonna be in office working. I just don't see that as a realistic thing. To me, it's not, we may have major events and we may have stuff and yes, there'll be some coverage and we still have extra funding, I didn't pull all of the money. So, I have a problem with that, but on the other side of it too, okay, say we do that and we get down into September, but we have a major event in June, well, now we're coming back, we know we need more money, but council's going, no, you don't get it because we've used up that money, now we're back in the same boat where we didn't fund it to begin with and now we're left with, well, crap.
Well, we got the 10,000, by the way, I don't use that word in city council meetings, but is there a way you could find out what we could do during that time, what we could do with the 10 and see and come back next month? Knowing that we want to move ahead with it and see what we could do that way?
So, I would say, from an EDA perspective in our discussion, just reflecting on the discussion at our meeting, so we had a lot of discussion about this because the, one, all the proposals were different costs and so we were looking at that compared to the budget, we were looking at deliverables and timelines. So, it was a really good discussion. We also wanted to talk to Tulip Tree because we wanted to better understand knowing that we had $10,000 in grant money, that we would need to come to city council for support. Our members wanted to talk with Tulip Tree about, you know, what's included, how does it work, is there some flexibility in the price? And that is really where I think the discussion landed on, you know, this 15 to 22 that's like, would get you to where you want to be and the types of way in which you want to use the budget, so. I think that if the council would consider contributing $5,000 to this project, that would be ideal today to walk away from that. If the council is not comfortable with that, our team can go back and do some discussion, but we would need to bring that back to the EDA for discussion and then we would need to go back to Tulip Tree for discussion, which then would get us a limited return, so I, and I'm not an expert, their proposal lays out how they go through their process and it's a creative process to get us to an end result and they would need to cut things out, so that means that we would not get the level of a deliverable that we would want, the work that goes into creating that, so whether we're cutting out engagement or we're cutting out revisions, those are all things that impact your final result. So, I feel, that's why I think you're hearing the passion from our group coming forward and saying we'd really love to fund this in a way that would get us to a product that we can all be proud of, know our community's voices in and that we can use it in multiple ways.
I would agree to that, we, as the EDA board, we did take the opportunity to look at the proposals that we had and this particular company is very well-known, I believe Stuartville has used them as well for their promotions and I think that, you know, the council's given EDA the responsibility for economic development and part of that is to, you've given that to the EDA board, obviously to bring to council for approval, but you've given us the opportunity to to look at these things and branding is very important. Gold Rush is still part of it, Gold Rush is still part of Orinoco, it's just that it's not part of the city's standalone like the Lions Club and everything, so. We do have an issue with, not an issue, but a concern that we really, and we've talked about this, having from the previous councils, having an identity and, yes, the council cut our hours back, so now we're down to two versus four times a month that we meet. So now we're down to two versus four times a month that we meet. And I feel like this is, this is our good gesture towards the council and the town that we need this identity. Gold Rush is still very much a part of that identity, but at the same time, we think we need to move forward, and we felt we looked at two, three companies, and we got proposals back. And this one was the one we thought was the right one. I still think it's the right one. They came and talked to us. But I do think that the E D A is is, yes, it's new. E D A is is a very integral part of of the of the city makeup, and that's why, that's one of the reasons why we asked for the council's approval to move forward with Tulip Tree. And we can still continue refining the cost and everything, but we're just looking and hoping that the council has the the respect and the the wherewithal to give E D A to proceed with our branding program, and we feel like this is the best one, and if if we're going to continue to bring things to the council, not that we shouldn't, we should, of course. But I do think it's important that we recognize that E D A is very key to the city and our growth. And this is the first approach to that. It's one of our initial goals that we had for a year.
Is there a motion on the table?
No, there isn't. No, not except per per discussion is the only motion. It's not you know, to agree with with Tulip Tree and and who you picked for for that, I I'm I agree with that, you know, that that's, if that's what you guys have picked and and reading through their 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 literature that they have and who's there, I'm 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 on board with that. It's not that I'm against that at all. You know, so, yeah, I am with with the Tulip Tree and everything else. And I'm just trying to find a way to make it work with with what there is on the budget that we have. We we cut way back on everything this year to to make it good for the residents that there are on on the increase that we had behind it. And, you know, I'm respectful of what goes on with with that. Again, I would say, you know, to to say, go ahead and and get started and see what we can do, because if we had a preliminary, like they showed the different variations of the logos. If we had even that, that was going on for what's going on during the summer. To have the different charts that there were and kind of go, just to get the impact or the the input that there is from from our citizens on what they like, I think that would be important, too.
I would imagine that we can build an engagement strategy that would fit, you know, the more the public's gathering during those times to bring those things on. We start now so that we're ready for summer to be able to do those things. If we don't start and do those things, it prompts us to get to that point, we won't have those ready.
And and I'm not saying, because we got the ten thousand dollars we can work with right now.
And just, I would say that from my experience in working on these types of projects, to ask them to start work and not have funding for the rest of it is not a professional approach to it. If the council is not open to contributing dollars to this budget, then we need to go back to an E D A to determine how we want to move forward. Because the current proposal does not need, you know, does not currently need, it's over ten thousand. So we need to go back and have some discussion. So it would delay it even more.
I think ten thousand dollar ask, especially with our budget being so tight and and being April is a hard sell for me. I mean, I, this is important. I get that. It's just, that's, that's a lot to try to.
I think she dropped it to five.
I think, but working with Jason, he said he would look at the budget from his perspective to see where is there and spend dollars. And so we left that to city administration to say, to help guide us and saying, what is the appropriate dollar amount to come in? So he did that work. Our team did the work, and Jason joined with Tulip Tree to understand, is there some flexibility in proposal without impacting the end result? And that's where we started to see more of a range of saying, these, you know, these are the types of dollars that we could work with to get a good final result, which is that fifteen to twenty-two. So I think that is the council is open to contributing five to five thousand dollars to the ten thousand dollar grant that we have, that could be a really great step in the right direction. And again, we would work together, you know, and build a committee together to do that work.
With that, I make a motion that we proceed with working with Tulip Tree towards our branding program. And that's the ask.
Is there any budgetary commitment in addition to the grant?
Well, that's, you know, that's, we know the proposal of the fifteen, so I guess we could I did make the motion that it's fifteen thousand plus and E D A would come back with a proposal.
Well, that would be the fire that we would put in.
Yeah.
We're not adding fifteen to the ten.
We have ten thousand available to us.
So additional five.
That we need to use this year, so it's additional funding
Where do you propose that additional funding come from this? From Jason's.
Jason's salary, on your salary.
Jason, Jason would let us move take, bring forward snowplow money from last year. So how we can take stuff out of one line and give it to another?
You're trying to bring from last year's budget into this year's budget? This is, this is already budgeted in this year. It's money that's already allocated and approved for this year's budget.
There was money that was forced into a black hole.
Yeah, we don't know where it went.
When is a black hole?
So I'll second that.
So the motion, is there any additional discussion? I think it's it's, the time is right. Yes, we can wait a year and have the same conversation, but there may be something else that comes up. But I just think the timing is right. It's one of our first objectives from the E D A perspective to help with our marketing of Orinoco. And I think it's, we need the marketing of it, and I do think it's, the timing is right. And if can we delay it? Sure, we can delay. We can delay a lot of things, but I do think that this is one this is one of our key objectives from the E D A. And I think it's, it'd be excellent for the city to proceed with this and.
And and again, Ryland, I'm not saying no, and I'm not saying to start from scratch next January. I'm not saying that at all. I'm trying to to find a way that that we can move and get the community engagement, keeping the ten thousand to get started on the ten thousand, that we're moving ahead with this, you know, now with with Tulip Tree. Okay, the difference is 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 seeing, I mean, if we had that logo or something that the residents could take a look at and say they like it, especially with what's coming up this summer. You know, I think it would, it would be great, and and those would be the right community involvement that you'd want to have is is with those things that are coming.
Jamie, and maybe you can help me explain this, but the, to get to that point, the community input happens before that to even get to the design portion of it, correct?
So there's initial, in the proposal, there's initial community engagement that helps to build an understanding about the communities sort of like what are some of our work that we did in the beginning with feedback about people's connection and and vision for the community itself. So there's it's proposed, what's proposed is like a working group with a variety of different people on that, and then some engagement. And then I would imagine that as we get drafts of looks and feels, I think in there where she landed was either two or three. That is where I think we could have some discussion later on in the process where the community could come interact with those looks and feels to give some feedback. So they would complement each other really great, but we wouldn't want to stop there. We want to take that engagement and then continue to move forward with the with the final look.
Well, I think it's what Marie is talking about, and I am too, is I'm just looking and and we don't know what the future's got and what's going on and what's going to happen. You know, again, I agree with what we're doing with this, so I'm not against that or against Tulip Tree or anything else that way. It's just trying to get it to to fit in there and trying to get community involvement without having something that's going on in our community is very hard. Trust me. We try to get community involvement all the time. It doesn't happen. Okay, those are the ideal times that we have is is during those times of summer to be able to get that involvement. You know, I mean, you can post things online, you can put it on Facebook. You don't have the turnout that there is.
Sure, and we did, you know, quite a bit of engagement with the survey and then had a good turnout for the open house. And I agree that there's a lot of engagement at Gold Rush Days. I attend those as well, as well as the other events. So I think we can build the engagement strategy to include both both the front side of gathering information at Friends, and then once the look and feels moving along to bring it to these different events so that people get a chance to interact with it.
I just think it's a great opportunity for the year to help kickoff for E D A and the process. And like you said, it's a process we go through. They'll come back. If you see in the the information that's in, it's in our packet, they go through different iterations. I think they were talking two to three different iterations that come back to the city for input. And it's it's a process. There's no doubt about that. It's just that I think it'd be excellent to start the process now and you know, it may take through the summer months, but at the same time, it's it's all part of our E D A objectives for the year, and we appreciate the council's support to make that happen, so.
I like the fifteen better than the twenty-two.
Well, no, which is five. Okay, for months, okay. And and I do too. I just don't like with a motion that's a fifteen plus because that that's an open ended. It could be fifty. Okay, and 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 I, so I'm I'm saying that, you know.
If we test them and said our budget's fifteen, go back to them and see what they could offer. Maybe there's a few things we'd have to cut and we'd have to be scrappy about that, but.
From the proposal, when we were talking to Tulip Tree, fifteen could get them started and get everything, the ball rolling efficiently. Less than that, I don't know. I think really she was saying eighteen, but she could make it work with fifteen. And so that fifteen can get us moving forward. So.
And we'll do that, yeah. Modified my motion by taking the plus of fifteen and just keeping it at fifteen thousand.
What's the fifteen include?
City will contribute five thousand.
Five for the city. Ten, ten is on the, so you're right, what we got for the grant.
So the motion I have is to move forward with approval for E D A to work with Tulip Tree towards the, on the branding program with an additional five thousand funding from the city.
We need to clarify where the actual funds come from.
I'm sorry, from the city administrator motion.
Motion, so.
It's not in the motion, but it's on the letter that.
After the packet, yeah.
Any other comments? It's worth, I think it's a great project, and I think it's going to vote well. We we looked at all the different companies, and we think this is a good company to work with.
I just don't want to lose Gold Rush. I think that is so unique.
We're not taking Gold Rush away. We're not taking Gold Rush.
Yeah, because it's so unique to have with the city. It's like, and everybody knows Orinoco by by Gold Rush. Yeah, I mean, that's.
And that could be part of it is that we're home of Gold Rush, but I don't know that we can be Gold Rush anymore.
Any other comments? All in favor, signify everything. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No. O's? Oh, no. Motion's agreed. Proceed with working with the fifteen thousand and
I will, I will bring a resolution next month for the budget amendment, five thousand dollars of a layout where it's coming from, where it's going to and all that. But it'll be coming from the, it's one of those two items. Probably split it between the two, just twenty-five hundred from each.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for your discussion.
Mr. Sheriff, still here? Deputy, I'm sorry. He's sitting back there. Are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Public Works, we have a new hire. Started Monday, I guess it was. Water and Sewer, Kane, did you want to come up and do a little monthly update, just kind of what's been on my mind with that real quick?
It was again. Yeah. Tyler Hink started last Monday. Been a good fit, getting along with everyone, fast learner. Coming into some water and sewer connections. Well, fifty sewer connections to go, thirty water connections. Our grinder pumps are finicky. They need a lot of attention. And our on-call schedule's been working out. We started that here three weeks ago, so the guys are getting used to that. That's a a major stepping stone for the city, have that twenty-four seven hour coverage and relieve myself from being that person. So yeah, we're going to be groundskeeping, mowing, getting the parks open here in the weeks to come, and any questions?
Yeah, do you have a new number that there is for people to call if you're doing you know, twenty-four hour or on-call type situation? Your name, your phone number was the one that's, that was in the packet. Have you got a new number?
There's a number, five oh seven, three six seven, two two eight one.
And that's.
That'll go to the on-call person. We we use a call forwarding app. So, yeah. It seems to be working.
I didn't know if you had that new number. That's
This is Public Works number, right?
Yep, it goes to a call group, so whoever has that app turned on gets notified. So the the three guys who aren't on-call turn the app off, and the guy who is has it on, and it's, it's been working.
We took that number out of the personnel policy.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, next time is a water and sewer. We have resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh eight. I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-five oh eight, which deals with a a notice to the twenty twenty-five city and ornicle fee schedule. And we have a couple of different E R U's, a check or update, I guess, it's a shape or a fee schedule for businesses that have minimum of two E R U's. And also a language is similar to a five percent late fee with a late water rate section to the sewer rate section, so they complement each other. And the other one is a two additional additions to the city administrator as well as far as additions under the community development and zoning section. Next building permit of twenty-five dollars and demolition permit of fifty dollars.
So what is that demolition permit supposed to include?
I, we have a motion here. Is there a second?
I'll do a second so that we can have a discussion.
Jason, would you want to?
So I had Melissa going through and updating all of our permits and all these things this week, and these are the two that we found that were we have permits for, they have prices for, that weren't on our fee schedule. I haven't gotten a super close look at the demolition. I believe it's just the I don't want to speak out of term with it, but from what I kind of remember, it's it gets all the information for who's doing the demolition and cleanup and things along those.
Yeah, because almost if you have anything done in the house for you're working in the kitchen and you're doing a new kitchen, you're going to have demolition before you do the new kitchen. So does that mean that a contractor comes in, he gets a permit to do it, but yet he has to have another permit for demolition because he's demolishing what's in there right now existing? So I mean, those were, you can kind of get a little bit crazy if, you know, to do that the right way. That's
I I agree. My my interpretation, my first thought was like, we had to demolish the house.
If that's what it was, yeah.
Maybe that's what the demolition permit purpose is for, not, I'm going to demolish my kitchen and rebuild like it's a a demolition, like for, you know, a structure or something like that.
It is clarified very clear. That's what this is, demolition.
That's what I read it as.
Yeah, no, so I mean, it's like all of a sudden you're you're.
And we can make sure the language is clear that it, you know, it's not for something like that. And it's one of those, we we often do this with our permits when they get brought in is people ask these questions and we make those calls as to what they are. Because unfortunately, you can't lay out on a permit everything that it should be used for and everything that it shouldn't be for, but we can make sure that the wording is correct, that it's you know, leads them the right way as to where it goes. And like I said, the my understanding is it's it's for the the bigger demolition projects, not.
For entire buildings, like entire structures.
So if we have this new garage that's going in on Minnesota Avenue, and they were waiting, and there was a year in between because they wanted to put the new one up and then get because they wanted to put the new one up and then get everything moved over and then take the other one down. Is that a permit, because it's a garage, that that would be demolition? Or would that be included in the building permit that we've already offered? I, I don't know.
Be the building permit.
And again, a lot of these are going to be on a case-by-case basis. So, you know, it's tough to kind of give you a, just like anything else, a good answer to it.
That one's not going to happen now either, so.
Okay, so, but anyway, that, that was a question on, on that, so.
Yeah, I can see the, the value in having a demolition permit, so we know where things are going and we know.
No, I agree with that, it's what, at what point is it called demolition, okay, and, and what does that involve?
Unfortunately, we haven't been able to get that on our forms and applications because we're having issues with getting Melissa onto the website to be able to update, put those in, so. Not having this information beforehand, I can't pull the permit to actually read what it says to you. So I can't fully answer that question.
Any other comments? Um, ERUs.
I, we have this on the, I'm looking, sorry, I'm looking back at the last year's fee schedules, I can't remember if these ones were on here, if this were new additions, I think they're I think these ones are, were new additions. But they were permits that we had, they just weren't on the fee schedule and they had on them on the permit itself was the fee, that's why these fees were left at what they were. It's because that was already on the permit from years ago that we have, so.
Any other comments? So now we do a voice vote.
I'll get back here. Mayor Ikorst.
Aye.
Councilor Phillips.
Aye.
Councilor Pendergrass.
Aye.
Councilor Spring.
Aye.
Councilor Reisdorfer.
Aye.
Next item is just FYI of the people's service report. Looking at the report, February starts off on the left again, here. March, we'll see some big changes in our, um, hydrogen level angle is coming down, so.
I was just at thirty-nine. I agree it's in fourth.
What's your? I'm in zoning.
I'm not happy with it. Yeah, but it works a lot.
I'm in zoning. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh nine.
We got Phil's waiting over there.
Bill, do you have any comments?
No, just, uh, Mayor and Council, uh, this is a relatively simple, straightforward, uh, rezoning. As my report, uh, of, uh, to the Planning and Zoning Commission notes, uh, the pattern of land uses would stay, uh, the same as it is now. There's already B two zoning, there's already R two zoning, there's already R one zoning to the north. So, uh, this change, uh, keeps that pattern in place and it's a reasonable and logical, uh, change. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, I recommend approval. Uh, and there's maps and there's a resolution in, in your packet to, uh, to, uh, approve the, uh, the rezoning.
Um, do you guys want to give a presentation or talk about it or? Since you're here.
Otherwise I can rely on our testimony at the commission, I sure can.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve, uh, the zoning change that there is from, from, uh, uh, would be from B two to R two.
Second.
For discussion, um.
Presentation was really good for planning and zoning.
It was excellent.
It was excellent, there was a lot of, uh, there was a handful of community members that came and spoke in favor of it and, um, um, so it was, so overall, very well received, so.
And I also turned around and took time to find out where that new house was, that, that you built, okay? And I went out and looked at the facility. And even though it was across the street, okay, I saw how you took care and watching for what there was for irrigations, or not irrigation, but, but the drainage issue that there was and, and how you took care of that property and, and it was, it was awesome, so, and I liked the house too. I'd like to get in and see it, but it was nice, so.
Excellent. Any other comments? Then, take the roll, voice vote.
Mayor Ikorst.
Aye.
Councilor Phillips.
Aye.
Councilor Pendergrass.
Aye.
Councilor Reisdorfer.
Aye.
Councilor Spring.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
You assume.
May I address?
Yes, please do.
Council, just for one minute. I recognize that the branding is very important and if this is in line with regulation, uh, we at Pine Southwest would like to provide additional five thousand dollars grant towards that purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, funds can be available to.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, that was a great offer, thank you, thank you.
Think you're going to call Jimmy Habs, right?
I will, I will reach out to him, let them know.
And if you get a chance to go look at that, that facility that there is, that house is really nice. It's off of fifty-two and, um, gosh, where.
It's west of fifty-two.
Yeah, get off at sixteen and go across, I, I'll get you the address, okay? And, but it's, 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 they really did a good job on how they cleaned every, it was nice. It was very well done.
It's on top of the hill, south of Apache Mall in the west side of fifty-two back.
Okay, yeah, we'll get the address and check it out.
Okay, thanks.
All right, uh, next item is a fire department. See, uh, a couple of little action items.
Uh, yeah, let me get, uh, yes, yeah. So. Okay, we, um, had resignation of two people. Actually, no, there's, there's one on, that's on here. For Lindera, uh, so we just want to, he wants to, to resign, I thought there were two, I thought I had another.
He's resigning from both.
Yeah, but there was another person that's resigning as well.
There's a leave of absence.
Leave of absence, the second one.
Uh, there were two that were taken off and a leave of absence.
Let's do it, because like I said, these came straight from Danso, but.
Yeah, so, yeah. But there, there's two of them there and, and Tucker, of course, is leaving for the Marines, so.
Make a motion for the first one.
Yeah, so I make a motion, I make a motion to, uh, approve the resignation.
Any questions? How long has she been with? Fire Department, any idea?
I, I didn't. I can find out, I can find, yes, so.
Would she be willing to do an exit interview?
I don't know, I didn't talk to her.
Okay, you could ask.
All right, any other questions? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O's?
Make a motion for, make a motion for, uh, to approve leave of absence for Tucker.
Second it.
Any comments? Appreciate, or, we appreciate both of them, working on the fire department, first responders, so it's great. Just all the comments, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O's? Next item is a, um, prove there's a quote for one in your packet. And we're looking at a request for eight pagers for a total of eight thousand thirty dollars, call sense.
I make a motion to approve purchase.
Second it.
Any comments?
I think the bill is for one pager, right, is that?
Yeah, but it's.
But they need a.
Yeah.
All in favor of the, um, acres, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Prove. The FYI or packet.
I think that this is.
City administrator, so.
Yeah, I think that this is just for safety. It's great to have, and we got them on every garage door in our house, it's like, they should be out there for that too, so it's.
They haven't had them on there.
Considering the trucks parked this far on the door.
Yeah. But I mean, it's, and they're moving things around because, I mean, you have the trucks, if they're coming in and going out, there's no room from where their lockers are to be able to do stuff, so they're working on this. It's good for OSHA.
Next day, next item is a fire relief donation to the city administrator, this administrator fund. One thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars, eight cents, it's just, it was approved. Where'd the donation come from?
That's the, the gambling donation.
This is a normal monthly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Responders, EDA, Parks and Trails.
Yeah, we have a couple of items here. The first one is to have a prescribed burn, um, by the parks and trails on, off Riverwood Hills. That was a former drain field, but there, um, is a lot of tall grass that they want to make sure that we're being proactive um, before something happens, especially with all the homes back there, so they wanted to um, get approval to burn that former drain field back there. This would also serve as a training opportunity for the fire department. It would also give advance notice to all the, um, residents that live close by there too.
Do we need to fill out any DNR forms?
Just make a motion first before we're going to discuss. I make a motion to approve the burn.
Go ahead.
So Jimmy's made a motion.
Yeah.
Three, second rate, okay. Sure, the ready, DNR forms to fill out.
I, Adam Raisson, think they needed to, but I can ask.
I'm pretty sure they do, so that should definitely be found out one way or the other.
I can ask them.
Um, I did reach out to our insurance and talk with our insurance to make sure not extra liability or issues with that, uh, they didn't have any problem with it, so we're kind of covered on that end and they're aware that this will be happening soon, so.
Yeah, Adam should know.
Okay, how do you, excuse me, Kane?
Yeah.
From your perspective in the fire department, assistant chief, how do you handle the manpower and scheduling that?
Uh, I think it'll happen next year, I think we're getting too green this year to do it, but that's my opinion. And yes, the DNR does need to be contacted, there is a form to fill out, a plan to fill out. You can't just meet up and start burning things, that's not allowed, so the DNR does have to approve it, so.
So there could be a timeframe with that.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. So whenever you do it, make sure they're done. Okay, next item is a, um.
We have a vote.
No, no, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item is the age-friendly Ornockel spoke with Parks and Trails, uh, fiscal agent. Let me make a motion, the city of Ornockel, be the fiscal agent for the Parks Audit Fund.
This is the one I amended at our agenda too. Um, we want to make sure that we're accepting that age-friendly umset grant of twenty-seven hundred and then allow the Parks Committee to pay those invoices.
So second. Good, thank you. And so that would just allow them to distribute the funds as needed, be their own vote keeper.
Any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's? Next item, Parks and Trails.
Who was the motion in the second, sorry, I got.
Remade the motion.
I remade the motion, I had the second.
Thank you.
That's the amended motion as well.
Uh, so next item is a, um, approval. I approve, uh, leave, is that name spelled correctly, program?
Copy and paste it from the email that was sent to me by the Parks and Trails representative.
Okay, you submit that.
Yeah, we need the application first. There's no application, we can't go through with this, so.
I have not got an application.
No, we can't vote on it, then, it's just going to happen. The application.
Which will table this.
Yep.
Some next month.
You have to vote on that?
No.
To table it?
Last item is a, uh, Parks and Trails committee.
It's been two hundred dollars for new plants.
Make a motion, Jim.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve this with, with one question.
Third second, I'll second.
Um, we want to make sure we didn't have the same plants, but were there plants that were poisonous that we put in last year? I can't, there was something that was in that was poisonous.
Yeah, that's, that big, pretty red one out here in the corner, toxic as all get out.
Okay. So it's, make sure they're not toxic.
Same, same as the one that was down, uh, maybe some down there, uh, poison plant.
It probably looked pretty, I don't know. Just don't touch it.
Yeah, just don't touch it.
Good, no poisonous.
Or invasive, probably.
No other comments, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's? Hey, um, under city administrator, we have.
Oh, we got to do the employee relations committee, there were additions there.
Sorry.
The additions to the ERC.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what's the administrative day?
Yeah, so, um, we have two items, one is administrative day, uh, this is for coming up on our, um, Easter, uh, having a, uh, I think that's correct, isn't it?
We get a Good Friday?
So, so would they have observed administrative days? So if a holiday falls on Sunday, they would get the Monday off. So Easter is not a national holiday, however, we wanted to give the staff Monday off because of Easter.
I was thinking that, I, I understand the way that it's written in the book, but it's almost Good Friday would make more sense.
Well, the reason I had this, we talked, so like, uh, this came, a lot of this came from South, like, we did in South Dakota, they do administrative days. The governor granted South Dakota this year Friday and Monday, actually, for administrative days for the Easter holiday, so. It was one of those ones where I was like, I don't care, whatever, you know, however it's done, but I think it's a good, good support for the staff to be able to do that and that was, Monday was the one, because we decided to stick with what the policy kind of emulates with the actual.
I, I read that in there, yeah, so, but I would still say Good Friday would make more sense.
Personal income tax, can you bring that here too?
Aye.
He's on it.
I'll do it again.
Any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 O's?
You're going to post that then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So administrative day, is that something that, does the state recognize that too, Minnesota?
They do for the national holidays, they.
On the Monday.
But we have the ability to, to do that as well for city, at the city level, so.
So the next item is regarding staff reviews, um, for the annual reviews for employees, we've identified a, a date of June thirteenth, is what we like to have all the, staff reviews completed, mainly because to help with budgeting, which we'll be doing in July and, and August, but the idea is we, we haven't been very diligent about timing of staff reviews and everything, so we set the date and work towards that, and have those reviews taken care of, so.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, I think that we'd incorporate in those staff reviews is peer reviews as well, so that we're getting, um, other input into areas of opportunity and goal setting, um, as we work through, hear those two. So there'll be an opportunity for others that may not directly work with them to provide input as well, which I think just helps with building, teamwork and collaboration, especially when we're working across departments.
Yeah, I'm just concerned if, you know, when you get into looking at stuff with volunteers, I think that's gonna be a problem, and so,
Yeah.
for suggestions, yes, but for the rest, no, I, I think that that, we can't do that for volunteers.
Yeah, we did ask about, um, like, the leadership in fire and first responder, if they would be willing to do reviews. Again, understanding that we probably don't want to go down to all of them, but I do think there's probably an opportunity to mend some bridges there, and to be able to hear where there's, their gap or barrier.
No, I, I agree with, with that, which is a non-formal, that's, you know, more of some input, that you could almost have a suggestion type box that there is to put suggestions in there between now and June thirteenth, or something like that will give us some input. I know that, from what I've seen, working for the last few years with the fire department, and what's gone on, that they've put a lot of restrictions on people, so in other words, if you're not showing up and not going to the meetings, and not doing the trainings that there are every other year, you're marked and you don't get to move ahead off of it, then you'll be out, so they're watching that, which is great, I think that that makes a lot of sense too, for what's going on. You agree with that, Kane?
My opinion doesn't matter.
And I think they're managing.
I think they're doing much better, yeah.
But, but again, as, as leaders for those departments, they, we should have some type of dialogue on how we help support them, how we remove barriers, what are things that they maybe need to work on, and it's a two-way conversation.
I think that's, that's.
And, and so, I do feel strongly that maybe they don't need, like, the technical annual reviews, but we need some type of way to have that dialogue and set it so every year we're having it, otherwise it's gonna go unnoticed and, and things are not gonna get better. Um, because I do think we have an opportunity to help support them differently, and, and really understand what their troubles are and their gaps and their barriers, so. And maybe it's not an annual review, we, we call it something else, but we do need to have some type of collaborative session on.
I agree with that part of it.
They'd be allowed to participate in peer reviews as well?
They could.
Intentionally, that's true.
Yeah, but again, it's like, if you can participate in a peer review, why wouldn't you get reviewed? Right? Like, again, I, I, I don't think it's meant to be punitive by any means, again, I think annual reviews, in my eyes, are a blessing because there's opportunities, and if you're hearing something bad in an annual review, then we all failed them, right? Like, we should be talking about that before a review. I think a review is, how do we set the stage and we work together in a collaborative way? Um, and maybe it's a department review or something, so it's not to Dan or Johan or, or Kane, right? Maybe it's to the department to think about those things, that might be a better way of how do we support fire and first responder differently? But again, if they're gonna, if they're gonna be able to provide input on Jason, then I would want them to have some skin in the game too.
Yeah, no, I, I understand it, I'm just, I'm cautious after that with, with volunteers, okay?
Yeah, yeah, that would be way too much to manage all the fifty-some, yeah.
I'll say from the HR side of it, too, you look at it as, you know, the, those positions all serve at the pleasure of the council still yet, and, you know, the council has the authority to remove somebody, and you still need to have that documentation, so this is part of that reason, you know, hey, we're doing reviews on them, it doesn't have to be an in-depth, as in-depth as we deal with our full-time city employees, but that way, as a city, we have documentation to back up, if something does go awry, we can say, as a city, we addressed this.
Well, I, I know that.
This is documented and, and move forward in a formal setting.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just, I, I, to have their reviews on file and that is not the right way to do it, for that, I'll go against that, uh, till the end, okay, after that, but, um, they, they watch pretty close on what's going on over there, and they keep track of what's happening. And, I mean, we haven't had, left, we didn't have any of those type of situations that, that could be involved with it, but those would, would be known.
And I would, and.
Is there something moving on the, did I notice something?
I'm not here to speak about the fire department, that's not my job is.
Well, I mean, if, if, and I think maybe it would be good for you and I to get together, since you're doing the first responders, I'm doing the fire, and, and, and talk together, because there's coordination between the two, and there's people that are on both sides of it, okay, to be able to do that, and, and, and figure it out, okay?
And my intent was never to go down to everybody in, in the volunteers. I think it's a department review, and again, it's a collaborative session, maybe it's, maybe the review is throwing people off, but maybe it's a, at a set time where we're talking about department needs, and not just budget, but like, how do we create a space that we can communicate effectively, that we know what your goals are for the year, you know, and not just budgetary? Like, I think there's just opportunity to bring them together.
Mm-hmm. I, I agree with that, I think that's a positive thing, and I'm with you on that, so, maybe you and I can work on, on that, we'll work our way through.
But for full-time staff, we would start annual reviews now with a due date of the thirteenth.
I think that that's, that's good, I, they, they have been missed, okay, and I think that that's, that's a good thing to do, and to have that set, I agree.
All right, um, I think that's just a good FYI. Jason, your update?
Yeah, just kind of had the monthly snaps out in there, it's been a busy month, um, we got our new employees started, um, obviously, this was done bef, before Rachel started, um, but we've got all three going, and they have hit the ground running. Been very satisfied with the office staff, and I've seen Tyler out there putting in work as well, talking with Kane, he's doing a great job. Uh, so very excited for the up and coming with them, um, we're gonna start getting caught up on some things, get some, some training done for different things. Let's see here, getting utility bills back on schedule, that's been good, I'm gonna jump around just a little bit, oh, it's up there, uh, we had, with that, the continued work with BSNA. Today was day two of meetings with them on, uh, final touches, I think we're down to fifty-five days until we go live with BSNA. So that's very exciting to get that, that process going, um, and then with diligent, we got a meeting on Thursday as well for some, to get her, uh, Rachel up to speed on some of the stuff, and then to kind of finalize, um, myself and Daniel with some of the final stuff before that one. I hope it's gonna go live here in the next month or so, um, so, those are moving forward, which is great, and we're gonna get the staff trained up on those. Um, the next big one, Orinoco Estates. Um, this one, I, oh, what did I have in here?
I think that my dog ate the papers, okay, and so I couldn't turn in my term paper, I mean, that's exactly what this is.
Yeah, so we, we, they did make the payment, um, the, of the, the main, um, the main amount, the main invoice, however, all the late fees were neglected, and I kind of broke that down there. I still gotta go through this week and, uh, put in, and I'll, I'll redo all the invoices and, and send them back out as to what's still owed with the late fees, and I'll make sure council has sent those as well, so they're updated. Uh, but like you said, that's still twenty-two thousand dollars in late fees, and I do not feel comfortable saying, no, you don't have to pay those.
No, no.
That's a council decision, um, that I think will need to be made, but I'm gonna tell you, my intent is to redo the invoices, send them back out, and we're gonna see where this, this lands with them and what's going forward.
Just so you know, on that, any individual resident has to pay late fees.
Yes.
Cause I mean, I, I get hit with a late fee, but, but you're gonna get late, but it's like.
I a hundred percent agree, and it's, it's one of those things, like I said, that, you know, there's a, there's a time and a place to work with things, and we're, we're well past that, um, so they're caught up in them.
Just, just to bring this up, when it comes to individual residents, if they don't pay, if they don't pay their, their fees throughout the year, is that your taxes in the year, can we do the same thing with them?
Um, I think we tried to do that, I don't know where this got, because they're in the township, we have to go through the process with the township, and I don't know that that got done this year, um.
So Jason, it's in the agreements that we had drafted, the use agreement that we had drafted with them, this was the main, I was kind of against even extending services out there for this very reason. Um, but what we did was we got the township to sign an agreement whereby they will do the assessments for us, because we can't assess out there, those, those aren't city residents, and so that's the problem with extending any kind of utility out to the township. Is, you know, there's a lot of problems, but one of the main ones is how do you assess, and how do you enforce violations of the sewer code or the utility code? So those are the two main issues, so I, we, we do have a contracts that we drafted, I caveated that when we drafted them and said, basically, this is the best we can do under the circumstance. Um, but I think the township is willing to assess for us, um, why don't we just talk about that this month, between now and the next meeting, and I'll, I'll point you to that language and explain. Um, but I think you're doing it right, just try and have them pay.
And I, I, so I did, Mike, I did read in there that language, and so I'm a little bit familiar with it, but yeah, I do want to touch base with that. I will say I did have productive conversation with the, with the group, um, the Orinoco Estates Open Meadows Group, um, and some of their folks from their business offices, I think, out of Chicago, um, it was very productive, and within the week, we got the check for those amounts. So that, to me, that's, that's mass improvement over what it was, I think they've had some internal issues on their side. So i- it's a good faith thing, so I want to continue to work with them to see if we can get this resolved and get them to pay this, but like I said, ultimately, and I told them this, it's not gonna be up to me, it's gonna be up to council as to what happens with this, but I will redo those invoices, send them out with what the correct fees are now with the remainders left, and get those sent out to them, and I think we move forward from there, but I just want that to be on council's radar, that that's kind of gonna be, be coming up, and we'll probably need a decision, you know, if it, if it means, hey, we gotta, at the end of the year, make sure we're working with the township to know that this needs to be done, then, then let's do that, um, and get that done.
So are they all caught up in current minus the late?
I think the last month, I, I get, I, I have the check, I haven't had time to sit down and put them into the invoices yet, um, I think the only one missing is this last month bill, um, that hasn't been paid yet.
Are they compounding late fees on this late fee amount?
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm, once it's been paid, I stop the late fee stuff, and it's just, this is the, the late fee that is left, I'm not continuing.
Rolls over.
Yeah.
Residue.
Yeah, yeah, it's just leftover, and so I'm not gonna sit here and go, and in ten months, that number's gonna be up another, you know, five percent each month. No, you paid the mon, you paid the main invoice, I'm gonna stop that, and we're gonna, I think that's fair, and I think it's in good spirit, considering they've made this, you know, I think they've paid eighty thousand dollars plus in these two checks, which is phenomenal, they're, you know, they're getting caught up in doing that, I think we just need to figure out, you know, if, if council at the end of the day, months down the road here, wants to say, nope, we're still gonna get the late fees, which I think personally it needs to happen, um, but that's a council decision, then we collect those with, we work with the township to collect those. So, cause again, we would ask our residents the same thing, to pay the late fees, so.
And then otherwise, there's no reason for them to, to pay on time, you got them from this point forward if they're gonna wait with the late fees all the time.
So we need an action item on this tonight, or?
No, no, this is just update stuff, like I said, I'm gonna get those out, just wanted to make you all aware of that, so, um, Eddie Bailey, they're still working on stuff, nothing else moving forward after they've got their initial batch of stuff. Um, I'm gonna reach out to me in later this week and see if there's anything more they need, um, I felt like I had done that, but I honestly can't remember off the top of my head, it's been a busy couple weeks. Um, our grant with the fire department, I did receive communication that DPS E Grant's office had granted, the grant had been awarded, so to me, it's approved, but we're still dealing with the federal government side of our EU or our UEI. So I think they just accepted the fact that we have it, it's just expired and approved the grant, but I'm still working with getting the federal side of that unique, um, identity identifier.
Yeah, if you could, if you could find out for me, cause I mean, the fire department asks, and so that way, I'd like to know when the state's gonna issue it.
Yeah, and I haven't heard anything more from the state other than that, that email on April eighth, so.
Did you check for next month?
Yeah, absolutely, I'm gonna keep following up with it till we get vacation with it, so, um, I haven't heard anything more from Gold Rush Crossings, I did meet with the township commission last night, talked with them, um, a little bit. They basically, I got a little bit of an update, Gold Rush Crossings is supposedly still talking with their attorney and going to be talking to their planning and zoning group, uh, to try and rezone their, that land in the township, but the township commission isn't quite sure what they're doing or why they're trying to do this, they've been very forward with communication that it has to go to the city, so that's still in the holding pattern, so that's kind of where we're at with that.
Any other questions, Jason? Right, uh, streets and roads. Schedule a street review with our, so. Daniel and Joe, scheduling a street review here in the next six weeks, so we can come back with a, hopefully something in, uh, May. What's that?
Oh, I mentioned a place to take a look with, with, when you guys get out there, so.
Take a road, any road. No, we do have, we do have a little extra funds, um, budget from the estate, I don't think it's yet, a hundred and five thousand dollars, something like that, that we could use, so we'll try and advantage of the key aspects, it's, it's just a one-year, it's just in two thousand and five, so we'll come back with something hopefully in the, in the May timeframe, should propose. Uh, unfinished business. Something that, Captain Phillips and Springs would like to discuss. The River Park Drain Field. This is, this is an ongoing issue as well, I mean, it was talked about back in twenty nineteen, twenty, when we started talking about it, how we go about transferring or configuring the, uh, River Park Drain Field as the white pits surround it, so.
I just didn't want it to get lost in, in the mix of what's going on, because I know that could be very beneficial to the city also, for the financial part of it, and also growth for another development to come in too, so I think it'd be really good.
Right, so, there's been a lot of different comments made about it, um, how, you know, homes and whatever comes out of our P and Z with our, um, new, um, lot sizes, that type of thing could make a difference.
Well, I think those lot sizes are pretty well established now.
I think you're gonna be.
Changing that.
Oh yeah, it's gonna be changed, you know, so it's gonna add that much more.
But the River Park governance has its own lot size requirements as well, and home size requirement.
Okay, I mean, if you would.
But, so what I was thinking is, we could actually look at, starting to look at land value, whether you wanna possibly chunk, sell this as a chunk, or, um, if Joe draws something up to get, I think the lots around there are about an average of point seven acres, so that's probably what we would need to stick with. Um, and see what we can do with that, and if we were to sell it as the eight point eight acres that it is, or um, to one person to develop, or.
I mean, that would be the ideal way to do it.
Or we platted out ourselves, and, as a city, and, and that would probably be the most beneficial.
For dollars to the city, yeah, but I just think it'd be ease.
Ease.
Yeah.
But I don't know that we always need to go the easy route.
I think if we take a look and see which is, is the best.
I think if you could get five or six lots, they would be built up pretty quick.
I think there's, I think there's a capability of putting about ten in there.
Yeah, point seven, and then looking at that, yeah.
Point seven and eight point eight acres, there might be a little cold. At point seven and eight point eight acres, there might be a little cul-de-sac where the li- the little grinder pump house was. Plus a couple of back lots. Uh, one thing I would wanna mention is there's two lots that don't go back to the road. And I think it would be important to, uh, get in touch with them and see if they would be interested in. Extending their lots before we do anything.
I thi- I think I, I think I would on the very end one, I can see that one.
And that's about a full acre.
But the other one.
That one, there's a lot of space behind that one.
That could make another.
I mean, other lives under there pretty easy.
Yes, yes.
Is that a full acre behind that?
Yeah, it would be a really, this one, I would really guess you could try and get another acre.
More assigned yard.
Oh, we did, oh, and if we were gonna get rid of this, we would wanna, uh, minimize the grass that Kane has to go mow, especially if it's only.
Okay, that, that one that's at the end, it's got the lift station in it, uh.
Yeah, so if you see the aerial shot, there's an oak tree sitting right there and to the, well. I guess it would be the east technically, but up on the map here, um, that's the lift station. With everything down of that to the property line is, uh, open. And so I don't know what's there and if it could be used or anything.
This tree right behind that one house?
Yeah.
And that's the lift station.
Yeah, I don't remember, maybe it's a hundred foot square. There is a few considerations too, um, that came into play after. Park was developed, there'll, there'll have to be some sort of stormwater management piece that will take up some land area.
Okay.
Some sort of stormwater pond infiltration.
That would work for that.
B and P that'll have to, you know, and that might be a spot, it re- you really gotta kinda look at how. You gotta look at a number of things to figure that out, but.
Um, so I don't know if we want to move forward with looking into that sort of stuff.
Well, this, this. We may wanna do, I think it's good that Stan Tech would look at it, it's just a matter of, um, the funding for it. And where that would come from.
Well, I mean, I just wanna keep it active on what we have going on, okay, and now we at least have a drawing to look at and think about. Uh, the steering committee, we should have our stuff coming back with that pretty quick off of that too, wherever. You know, you, you've got your stuff for, um, your, you know, for the, your association. Requirements, okay, and see if that's set in stone, or if that can go along with the change what there is with the city.
Well, we wouldn't be wanting to put, you know, third acre home lots in a. Established subdivision that's a three quarters plus acre lot.
Okay, no, I, again, it's, I, I wanted to, to be good over there and look nice and everything match up with what you got. Cause I think that's what the residents would like to have, or the same type of, of homes that there are that you got, you know, so.
So with that, what kind of, um. Like, can you just build on there now, or?
You have to go ahead and take the, do some subsurface removing of pipes. That are still in the ground, so, it's totally the one thing that's from the, inside the fence, I guess, that's.
So, is that as much as what you had to do up there at River Ben this last week? Cause they were pulling a lot of stuff out of there.
That's the developer, but yeah, you go have to.
Do the same.
Depends on how the lots layout and how that works, but most, if not all of that system will come out of the ground.
Okay.
Right, and then there's some other considerations, you know, how to get sewer and water there. Um, to the individual lots, drainages, I was a concern, and then compliance with stormwater management requirements. Um, those three things top of mind, plus the community waste treatment system, well, they have to be kinda sorted out. But if you'd like, we can, you know, kinda put together a sketch. Based on minimum lot sizes within the River Park covenants, at least of one or two options of how that might lay out. And stop at that, or we could, you know, kinda cost it out too and figure out what it costs to, you know. Extend sewer and water services into them and, you know, if there's a cul-de-sac, what does that cost?
Right. I heard do it as a, as a two-step process and do the first one first. And then at least come in with, with that, and then if we, whoever, cause I mean, if a developer buys everything, let them pay for the rest of it.
Yeah, but if you're talking like, the most recent lots in River Park at that size are selling for about a hundred thousand dollars. Now, with some mediation, I, I wouldn't imagine that we could ask that same amount. If there's gotta be work to it, right?
Well, yeah.
So, but now, I mean, the last ones that I've seen, I think the neighborhood's been full for five years, so.
Well, I, I think that, that people would, would, would jump at that, with what's going on, so, the price has gone up over the last five years of, of what's happening and.
Well, the work to go into the lot is kind of the unknown, right, of, do we wanna get rid of it in one big chunk? Can somebody else deal with it, or do we want?
Individual.
Individual lots, sell them individually.
There's, there's some other challenges as I think about it, you know, parkland dedication per the ordinance, we'd have to think about. But we already have the River Park right there, I know, but. That wasn't, you know, you're, you're redeveloping the property, you know, it was essentially considered green space. When the original development was developed, so you could waive that, but I'm just saying per. For the ordinance, typically that would be a consideration too, and it doesn't have to be a huge deal, but. Um, you know, and it doesn't, you don't have to necessarily always dedicate land, and you're right, you've got that lift station parcel.
Yeah, you got a little bit there, you could put in there, put a dog park in there.
There you go, I don't think they would like that much, anyway, there's, there's some things to think about for sure.
Only during daylight, though.
Yeah, yeah, no, so I, I was just bringing that forward to, I don't know. Uh, expound on Jim's point of not letting it fall behind, but actually maybe starting to move forward. I think the sale of this property, I haven't think, I think you brought it up a while ago, but the sale of this property could really. Catch us up in some CIP funding that had been neglected over the last ten years.
Well, and is this something that we need to look at or in our budget talks for next year? If we need to do any work with it, that's probably where.
So we'd want that work done up, up front, right?
If we couldn't peddle it all in one piece, if we couldn't peddle it all in one piece to a developer, that'd probably be the best way for us to look at it. You know, if looking at it, if we need to. Exactly, we need to spend money on it, a lot of times you have to spend money to make money too.
That's right. I will, if I can add something, the League of Minnesota cities actually just put this out on their LinkedIn, there was an article on Monday about. Um, South Center in Minnesota, um, something similar to this, the city bought land. And then they are, uh, forty-five acres worth, and they're putting in, uh, lots, residential lots to help with their housing, but. They're doing all that work themselves, and it talks about small cities and how smaller cities are stepping up in different ways that, you know, the small cities can accomplish this. Um, so I think there are ways out there, and I think it would be, be wise of us if we did keep it in-house, which I think we should personally. Uh, to work with our EDA and our planning and zoning to, okay, how can we f- help fund this?
Yeah, that's, that's what EODA did with all that stuff on the north side of fourteen.
Yeah.
That's all done that way.
All through EODA, yeah.
No, on the north side of fourteen, newer developments, so.
I mean, it's gets good opportunities.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's great, and we've gotta look for ways to put money back into the, the emergency stuff and the future. So whether it, that money goes into capital improvements, or it goes into some sort of investment. Whatever we can do as a city, I mean, it's, it's incredibly beneficial and it's kinda sitting there empty right now, so.
You know, it may be, it might be a way to make some kind of a, some kind of a property trade too also in, uh. A way to acquire property for the new city center that's been talking about, so.
Uh, yeah, I, I think we're getting in a little bit, but I, but I think.
It's a three, like a three-way trade.
Oh, I'm gonna say, let's do it. Uh, so what?
So I think we should. Let's just, let's keep this active, okay, and keep it under old business. Okay, and then that way we can keep it on the agenda.
Do you want Joe to have any, do any sketches for us for next meeting, or?
Well, we, in engineering, I think we, we need to keep in mind the cost of doing that too.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's where. Let, let, let's wait for a month, I think this was great discussion tonight, on, on what's going on and then for us to think about it.
I think the, because it's city property and, uh, it always was, it was part of it. Yep, let's just wait with our discussion, a lot of questions.
Good stuff, good stuff.
You have a memo to, like, goal-setting workshops for a budget?
Yeah, so I sent everybody out the memo, um, for feedback to send to committees and departments. And you can speak to your committees, um, on that and kinda give them fair warning that that's coming and. That we'd like for them to put together, and I did add your. Stuff in there that you requested, um, so maybe I'll send that back out, but. Basically, it's just going through and saying that we're gonna be doing these workshops and we wanna get their input on what's important to them. And so, um, I think I will send, have Jason send that out, so we can, cause we have another five thirty meeting next. Month, and try and get some of these things rolling and get them in here and get them going. So, some, some departments and some committees aren't gonna need much time, um, some will need quite a bit of time, so. Uh, if we can, the sooner I send it out, the better, but if you guys are good with that, I'll reword it a couple of days.
It's a great idea, it's gonna be very good, Daniel.
Uh, I'm gonna resend it to you to make sure that I captured what you were asking.
What you're thinking about and what is on the next item.
Another same.
Setting dates for workshops.
Yeah, I just, I put this on there, cause I wanted to say, okay, what are we doing for workshops, it sets dates. Are we going to say, okay, every council meeting from here on out, we're gonna do a budget, uh, workshop beforehand? For the rest of the year, like, I think that will be beneficial, but at least, at the very least, to be able to start working through a lot of this stuff.
I, I think the workshops are really important to be able to do that, where we can get a little bit more communication going back and forth. And we're moving ahead every time we have one of those, if it works for everybody, I think that, that's a good thing to do.
I'd prefer them on a different day than Thursdays or Tuesdays, that might be beneficial to do them off of. Um, to not, not to stack up the council meeting and that, but I personally would prefer a different, different day.
Yeah, and I would think five thirty might be hard if we're asking other people to come, they might not be done with work by then. Right, cause if we're having the departments come, that, that's a, sometimes that's tight.
Well, I know Wednesdays, we don't have any meetings.
Though we're saying Fridays.
Friday, seven AM, sure, let's do this.
Friday at one.
It's gonna be a tough one there.
You're like, you're fifty hours in before Thursday.
Friday night wouldn't be an option, I take it.
I'll be on Zoom, I'll be on a phone call.
It's, it's a great idea, I like it, so we should just.
Yeah, I, I think that's good, I think workshops are, are.
So that's what I'm asking for, is can we make a decision tonight, so I've got something moving forward.
Well, let's do it next, can you do next, can you do May?
Next month. We're gonna do next, next month is already set.
Okay, so let's do it that way and we'll figure out what day we'll work.
Cause May was already on the schedule.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. New business, um. Those here with us. Okay, what do you think for a signature party, but fact as well, so I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six.
I'll second it.
Gold call.
We got a discussion, is there any discussion?
Discussion, comment.
It's just an addition to the.
Yeah, just adding, getting her.
Adding that blank line, that line that we left blank last November, December.
Yeah, and then there is the, uh, the signature there, so, what did I just?
Right, there's no other comments, all those, favor sign if I'll be saying, aye?
Yeah.
With the resolution.
Yeah, sorry. Mayor Ikorst.
Aye.
Council Phillips.
Aye.
Council Penegras.
Aye.
Council Spring.
Aye.
Council Raisdorfer.
Aye.
Congratulations, you've signed check.
Alright, that's approved, next item is, uh. Resolution twenty-five, twenty-five dash oh seven.
Is this, I get a, I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Is this just a formality that there is off of this one, I mean, that's all.
Yeah, this is just a renewal of the last one we did in twenty twenty-one, or whatever date of twenty twenty, sorry. So this is just a renewal of this.
Everything else looks like pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's, it was sent over from the township, this is all their wording in the, the agreement that they had written out, but yeah, it's just, uh.
It's been the same.
Yeah.
Thirty years.
Gold call. Okay.
Mayor Ikorst.
Aye.
Council Phillips.
Aye.
Council Penegras.
Aye.
Council Spring.
Aye.
Council Raisdorfer.
Aye.
Dave, you wanna add action, I'm with Erv's.
Yeah, uh. Erv had that water, and he, he thought he was, wasn't certain what was going on between him and Kane, I think they just got, decided it might be freezing. They asked him to run his water for the weekend, and. He didn't have any pressure in the house, but apparently it had enough to run out, uh. Hundred and seventy-five dollar water bill on it, uh. What happened is in the, uh, the curb stop. At the street cast iron dropped over the top of it and a cap on it. And the, where the cap, that cap was at in relation to the actual curb stop. It was hitting it, and that's what cracked the pipe down under, broke the pipe lock down underneath the plastic tubing. I think somewhere, probably between the, uh, installer of the curb stop. And we're expecting to, it didn't require some kind of gap between the curb stop and the cap that went on top. And then the curb stop. One of my heart was adjustable, this one wasn't adjustable, usually slide in and out like the telescope, and this one didn't. And it's foot in this driveway and, so I think somewhere we should be covering his expenses on earth to take care of it.
Was this on the easement?
Well, all of the, all of the curb stops are actually in the easement right at the edge of your property line.
Is there a motion before we get into discussion?
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to reimburse Erv for any costs that take, uh, get taken care of. And, and, and to cover his water.
Well, quick and quick, for discussion.
My, my curb stops in the easement.
Your curb.
But it's not in this, but it's not in the, in the driveway.
Many of them are in the driveway.
Yeah, but it's got the adjustable part of it, where you're not gonna break. You know.
Well, my understanding of utilities, once they pass the easement, are for the homeowners.
Well.
But it's on the expense.
But it's, it would be covered by his homeowner's insurance.
I can see that being the case, if it weren't for the fact of that cap right on top of the curb stop to start with.
How long has it's been there?
Since two thousand nine, I think, or ten, somewhere in there.
If, if I, if I may, and Kane will help give a little bit of backstory on this, cause he's knowledgeable in this as well.
For the motion, you're asking for the nine twenty?
I'm asking for the nine twenty, black top on the water.
It would be thirty-six, thirty-two, and forty-three cents if it's everything. So three thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-three cents.
Eighty-three cents. I know everything that's supposed to be right from the curb stop end is supposed to be the homeowner's, but if the curb stop is move, moving in. You don't, you don't know it, you don't know that's gonna be moving like that.
So, and, and Joe will give perspective as well, but I'm gonna start, um, cause I know the least of this, but basically my understanding is, this was installed years ago. There was an issue, and then it was dug up and fixed by a private contractor by Erv at that time, back in like two thousand ten again. So, this has been dealt with and resolved by a private contractor after the fact already before. So when I spoke with Erv about this, I told him, basically assessed that if he wanted this fixed, he would need to bring it before. Water Sewer, and then if it was recommended, it would go to council, it was not recommended by Water Sewer, it was just left be. Um, and again, when I spoke with Erv, it was, okay. Um and again, when I spoke with Erv, it was, okay, I could see, as a reasonable person back the first time this happens. Going to city saying, hey, this was yours, this is what happened, it wasn't fixed, right? Can you give us some, give me some funding to help offset the cost? Um but after it was fixed on his own the first time by private contractor. I think the city has lost the responsibility to make any additional payments um to help cover the cost of this, which is basically what I told him. Um and so I don't think that it's in the city's best interest to say, oh, you know, ten years. Plus after the fact, after it's been fixed already before, we're now gonna come in and fix it, I'm sorry, it wasn't fixed the right way ten years ago, I don't. Know what happened, I wasn't here, I wasn't part of that, um however, I don't think that that's good practice for a city to be doing. Move forward in pain, that kind of stuff.
My understanding is, it was, when it, after it was installed, the only other time it was dug up is when it, when they turn around and hook it up.
Okay, that's not what, anyways, we'll, we'll let them speak on this.
I guess I'll speak up and give you some perspective, so it was installed in two thousand nine, fifteen years ago.
Ten or eleven.
Two thousand nine or ten uh by the city's contractor uh to the property line, or just inside of the right-of-way line. Uh at that point, the property owner dug it up again. He hired his own private contractor to dig dig that curb the curb stop up in the curb box. The curb stop is the valve buried in the ground, the box is the. Basically what allows you to turn the valve that extends to the surface, okay, so he hired a plumber. The plumber dug up the curb stop, the curb box extended to his house. Um and so that was the first time that it was disturbed after the city's contractor installed it in two thousand nine or ten. Uh then I understand a few years later, he had a problem with it. Uh similar to what he had now, he hired a contractor to come in, excavate it, repair it. Um and uh now, most recently, the issue came up again, so. Essentially, that curb stop has been dug up three times since the city installed it. By private contractors um that were retained by the property owner. And I should also note that city code. Indicates that water and sewer services are the property owners from the home to the main. Which includes going through the curb stop into the right-of-way, into the street if necessary. And so, you know, the responsibility, in my opinion, I agree with Jason, I think that. Not their city's responsibility, you know, it's unfortunate that it happened, and uh he had to fix it, but. You know, very likely, the adjustment of that curb stop and box, the city didn't have anything to do with it, nor did their contractors. The private plumber dug that up twice. Made the adjustments, put it all back together, and it failed again. That's not the city's fault, in my opinion.
Thank you for clarification then.
That being the case, I'll just make a friendly amendment to that, that. You know, at least to cover his water bill that there was, that he had on to try to find the problem.
I think that's reasonable, the difference between his normal water bill and.
Yeah.
And um, and the additional.
Well, that's what they do up in Cedar Woodlands, and they have winter freezing issues. Tell her under water till, done that for quite a few years, I don't know if we're still doing it or not, but. They did that up there.
I'd like to say provides. We provided a tank, didn't we?
One year.
Yeah.
They provided a tank, and had to run a separate water line to, in some places. Covered the water bills and up there, so, and that was for the total freezing, so that's. Seems to be like about might happen here, so. You're covering that, I think you'd be.
So we would reimburse about a hundred and twenty, twenty-five?
I'm gonna ask what the amount is that the council wants reimbursed, otherwise I'll take the last twelve months and average it, and then subtract it from.
That that would be fine too, or if you want to write a hundred and twenty-five, if that gave fifty for the water.
Like I said, I'm just asking for you guys to clarify one way or the other, I don't care.
Just subtract fifty-four dollars off that, and then give you the.
Yeah, cause fifty-four is already on here, that was paid.
For the previous month.
Yeah. You wanna just do one twenty-five and make it simple that way? That makes it easy, just just take a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, I can do it however, that's why I'm asking.
It's simple and straightforward.
So you're sending one seventy-five?
Take off a hundred and twenty-five.
I'll be one twenty-five, this is normal, this is basically fifty dollars.
Yeah, so.
Be fifty eighty-three, be as the bill.
There you go, and and I mean, that's a simple way to.
Usually you give him credit on his sewer bill, right, or his water bill?
I'll have to look at how we do it, we'll, it's either gonna come in as a credit, I'll figure it out.
Well, I don't know that anything's easy in this water system, so.
Riley's going, what are you guys doing here?
No, we talked different figures, so what's, who's making the motion?
What, I make the motion for a one twenty-five, okay, to be taken off as a credit. Off the bill.
A second.
Something that could be done next month's bill or whatever.
Right, right.
Be the June bill, or the May bill, I'm sorry.
Whenever Jason can figure out how to do that part in the system.
Well, I'll figure it out, he can make the the payment, and I'll, we'll figure it out for this, I'll I'll work out and get ahold of them and work with them.
Any other questions? Appreciate your explanation. That's how it came this, I don't explain it anymore, and so. All right, yeah, any other comments? Saying that, all in favor, sign if I'm being saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? Approved? Let's see. Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Uh I'll second that for discussion.
Your, your comment.
Uh my quick comment is, I just wanted to add a little bit uh on fire. Um there is a group that's called barbecue relief, BBQ relief. Um and it's a group that's out of Orinoco, that turns around and goes to places and and feeds. When when things happen, whether it be, um what was it, uh North Carolina? Or down in Florida, or whatever, but they contacted the fire department and said, this is what we do, and so. May third at one o'clock, they're gonna do a little barbecue for everybody that there is to get an idea. Of what that is, so it's available to us in case something happens, so I just wanted to go to that.
A point aye.
Yeah, okay, the other thing too is they they went to a school that there was, actually, it was over in Austin, where they do a lot of the training. Uh there were fourteen members that went over for that training. And that was the biggest turnout of any city that there was, to be able to do the training in Austin, so. It gives you some idea of the interest and the work that they're doing in the fire department to keep everybody up to snuff. And what was going on, so I thought that that was really good, yeah. The other one that I had.
Well, there's more?
Yeah, you know me. I was going through a couple of things, and just for for clarification. Uh so we've got everything into the switchgear?
It is.
Okay, I I saw that, just wanted to make sure that that was true, when I was reading after that. And then I had page eighty-two, let's see if I have that one, all right. Let's see, I was looking at, um it's forty-one, one hundred, and it's in their. City clerk and also deputy clerk, and it's under salary and wages, and both of those are listed as forty-one, one hundred. Again, this is on page eighty-two. Okay, I was just trying to figure out why on one of them, the the salary was already. Twenty-nine thousand dollars, and we really, and the other one was three thousand.
My salary.
Oh, that's yours?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if that.
The forty-one to one hundred is the salaries line, so any salaries we have is gonna be, that third number is the forty-one, one hundred.
Okay, cause I saw, okay, I saw.
And the the three thousand is the payout for Renee after she left.
Okay, well, I, that's just wanted to have clarification, that's all. I looked at that, um and then looking at page eighty-three. Uh line number four-two-oh-six-so, which is on dues and membership, we were over about seven hundred and forty dollars. Do you know what the difference was for what we had budgeted?
I don't, I'd have to go back and look at it.
I just, you know.
That line says dues and memberships.
Yeah, it's got, that's like the LMC stuff and and that, where that comes in, so I don't know, I'd have to go back, like I said, I'd have to go back and look at it. And have that information.
Thank you for that, that was easy, see, went back.
Questions that have been asked before too.
Going on, okay, so.
We need a vote on the consent agenda, please.
Sorry.
A vote.
Consent agenda.
A vote.
All those in favor of the vote, consent agenda, sign if I'm being saying aye.
Make a motion to adjourn. It's like. Says you're gonna break off on.
There's some washing.
Yeah, both sides going, on either side, and then filling up the other one, which is down the hill going the other way, you know. Can we put some gravel in there?